You are watching Access La Porte County, Channel ninety-seven. Coming up next, it's November twenty-first, twenty-twenty-two meeting of the La Porte County Election Board Special Meeting. You can find more information for this meeting by visiting www dot access laporte county dot org.
Okay, today's November twenty-first, uh, this is the meeting to certify the election results of the La Porte County Election Board. If we could stand for the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, roll call, uh, Chuck Waterson, President, uh, present, Heather Stevens, Clerk and Secretary?
Present.
Nelson Pachardo, Vice President?
Present.
Okay, uh, Nelson is here with us by Zoom today from the beautiful Dominican Republic. Um, the rest of us are here. Um, we're gonna start with, uh, the first thing, we're not gonna have public comment today. The purpose of this meeting is just to certify the election. Public comment can be at the next meeting. Um, so now we're, we have no old business to deal with. We're gonna move on to new business. Uh, it says challenges. Do we have any?
No.
Okay, no challenges, uh, provisional ballots. We're gonna go through the provisional ballots real quick. It looks like we have twelve of them. And we will start with the ones that have initially been marked as no good, but we're gonna go through them real quick. So the first one I have, Nelson, is for, um, uh, Marla Hudson. Um, it appears as if she did a provisional ballot, provided her ID, but she is not a registered voter. Um, so my thought is we do not count this one. Your thought?
I agree. If it's not a registered voter, we can't accept it.
Heather?
I agree.
Okay, um, the next one is for a Monique Bennett. It looks like we have the a BRG four change of address, but they never provided an ID?
That's correct.
Okay, so not gonna count that one. Nelson, you in agreement?
Right, if it's, if it's been more than the amount of time by statute, they haven't presented their ID, then we can't accept it.
It's actually been, I think, almost thirteen days, right?
Right.
So that one's not being counted. Um, next one is Anjana Miller, uh, same thing, VRG, uh, four twelve was filled out for a change of address, um, but an ID was never provided to our office. Um, and it also doesn't look like there's a ballot. Um, so not gonna count this one as well. It's past the deadline. Agreed, Nelson?
I agree.
Okay, Heather?
Agreed.
All right, the next one is for a Stephen Benner. So all these didn't have IDs accompanying them, right?
Correct.
Okay, so Stephen Benner did fill out the proper, uh, pre-four, um, envelope and ballot, uh, at the poll place, um, but never provided his ID. Again, it's past the deadline, so, uh, not gonna count that one, Nelson?
I agree.
Okay, Heather?
I agree.
Joseph Foster Junior, uh, same situation, pre-four filled out ballot in, in here, but never came to the clerk's office within ten days to provide his ID. Not gonna count that one, Nelson?
I agree.
Heather?
Agreed.
All right. Uh, Riggs Bardell, uh, same thing, filled out the pre-four ballot contained in here, never provided an ID within the deadline to certify that this is in fact his vote. Uh, not gonna count that one, Nelson?
I agree.
Heather?
Agreed.
Last one is Roberta Hayes. Uh, this is a VRG four that was filled out on election day. Um, and they never provided an ID within the timeframe, so not going to count that one. Uh, Nelson, agree?
I agree.
Heather?
Agreed.
All right, so those votes that were just read are not going to count. I think there were seven? Six or seven that are, are not gonna count because they didn't meet the deadlines. The, some of them filled out the proper forms, um, and just didn't get their IDs in time, but that's the statute. Uh, we can't count those without them meeting the statute, uh, for purposes of safe administered elections. Uh, next we'll move on to the
Hold on, Chuck, and just, and just to be clear, the statute is very clear whenever, whenever you fill out the forms, on the form, it says that you need to present your ID within ten days. So whenever you fill that out, it's on there, just so that the public is aware. We're not just, you know, not counting them, you know, for no reason. It's very clear listed on the actual application that you need to show your ID within a certain amount of time.
Correct. Okay, and now we're gonna move on to, I have a vote for, what's the name? Here we go. No, keep these over here. Yeah. For Joshua Hildebrand, we've got the proper forms filled out here. Um, then the pro nine, everything's filled on there, and that's instructions for the provisional vote. Then we have the affidavit. And then where is the IDs?
In here, so, yeah.
And then there's an attached ID here. Name matches up and and the address is, is the same. Uh, Forster Road, so I'm going to open this ballot. And ensure our secret envelope, huh? So we've got D and R initials on the ballot, but not the secrecy envelope. Uh, Nelson, how do we wanna handle that?
Well, typically what we do on the secrecy ballot, that's an issue that comes from our office, so we can make that correction, have an, uh, an R and a D provide the signatures on the secrecy ballasy, and I, I say we accept that if that's the only issue with it.
Yep, that is. Um, everything else is filled out on the ballot.
I'm getting a D who's been sworn in.
Okay. So we will set that one to the side for now, but that will be counted, uh, following the proper, um, initial here. Hold on to that one.
Sure.
Next one is someone who filled out a provisional because they were not able to be located on the poll book. Um, it's for Karen Clark, um, a Michigan City resident. She provided her address within the, I'm sorry, her ID within the ten days. Address matches the one that was not in the poll book system as a registered voter. Everything looks good on the envelope. I'm going to open this up. Envelope not, envelope not signed on this one, and neither's the ballot on this one. So unfortunately, I'm gonna say we don't count this one, Nelson. Is, are you in agreement with that?
It's missing the signature on the actual ballot?
Ballot and envelope.
No, it's missing the initials.
On the secrecy sheet?
That the poll workers should have.
Right?
Yeah.
That's not a deal, but what?
I've got a ballot with no signature on it. And then I, the envelope as well. Envelope, not a big deal, ballot, um, I don't think we can count without the initials.
Uh, are you talking about the, um, initials from?
The poll workers? No, from the poll workers. Whoever was at the precinct that
Oh, right, okay, yeah. Um, what about on the envelope that it came in?
We just have the voter's signature. We just have the voter's signature. Nothing else.
Hmm. That's a tough one because it sounds like the voter did everything they were supposed to do.
The voter did.
And the, the ballot is just the D and the R from the location, right?
Correct.
Correct.
And Heather, you received that from that precinct?
I did.
Uh, I would say that if we have a D and an R that are under oath and have, and have, are registered to work, then we should count that.
I agree.
So let's go through the process here a little bit. She showed up to the precinct on election day, is that correct?
Yes.
Best to your knowledge, yep, eighth of November, twenty-twenty-two. We got that signed here. Um, and then that was a, where'd your paperwork go? So this is all signed, the challenger, Mary Fox, so I assume she's the inspector or judge at the location?
Correct.
Okay, that was all signed, and then she placed this ballot in here after Ms. Clark voting.
Yeah, I think that that vote should be counted. That voter did everything that she should have done.
Okay, I agree. I will sign for the
And we have Caitlin, who is a member of our absentee.
Or we don't have a chair, so if you wanna sit like right in front of us here, that'd be perfect. I keep this number from Poland. And your name for the record?
Caitlin Sanders.
Caitlin Sanders, and you're a registered Democrat in this county?
This is correct.
Okay. Okay, if I could have you initial where it says Democrat in the little box down there?
Yes, sir.
And then also on the back of the envelope as well, there should be a spot next to mine. Did I sign there yet?
You did.
Okay, perfect.
And then this one as well, Caitlin.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Just the envelope on that one. Yep.
He's like, we take them inside?
Yes. All right, so that one will be counted. Next, we have Jonathan Al- Alberton? Think that's what that says. We'll find out when we get deeper in here. I don't have, um, ID for this guy.
You can't count it.
Okay. Uh, Nelson, this one, we've got the proper forms, the pre-four, everything. The only issue is there was no, um, ID submitted within the ten days of the election.
Yeah, can't accept it.
All right, so that one will not be counted. Here's your paper clip to keep that together. Same with this one. Next one is for a Chase Hunzly of, uh, Cass Precinct and County. Um, all the proper forms, again, only issue is there was no ID provided to the election board. Um, here. And the affidavit on the back is not filled out. Um.
You know what? Taylor signed this.
Yeah, she signed that, but that's just to challenge the proof. Uh, this wasn't what was provided.
Okay.
They received an absentee ballot but didn't use it, so they provided provided proof of identification. It's just not here.
Yeah.
Okay, um.
I, I would be comfortable to count that if she signed that.
Taylor signed that she accepted identification?
Correct, but there is not a copy of it attached.
But she signed saying that she saw the ID?
Yes.
Yeah, that's, that should be good.
Then we've got that one as well.
Okay.
As long as everything else is on there.
So just pull that one back.
Okay.
We will recall that one. Okay, so yeah, the, the pro ten was filled out correctly. There's just not a copy of the ID, uh, but it was sworn under oath that she received a copy of the ID and matched it to that of the voter. Um. And then it says, yes, driver's license was accompanied. Okay, so on this one we will count that for Chase Hunzly. Uh, let's check, or not yet. Let's check the ballot. Okay, we have D and R initials on the actual ballot. The envelope was not signed. Could you sign that?
I'd like that in the future.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so Chase Hunzly's vote will be tabulated after s- certification here. Do you have the paper clip for that one? Okay, and then Nelson, we're gonna go back to, um, Jonathan Alberton. It seems as if the same thing happened there. Taylor did swear under oath on eleven fifteen, which is enough time. Eleven fifteen that she received the identification. She did check that the provided proof of education or identification. Um, and this was an issue. They had to vote provisionally because they moved res- residency, but it wasn't reflected in the poll books. We've got the proper affidavits attached to that with the pro nine. Um, and that registration matches up to the ID that was provided, so I will open this one and barring any unforeseen issues.
And one of our employees reviewed the identification signed under oath that she received that.
Right, Tay- it was Taylor.
Yeah, we just don't have a, we just don't have a copy of it.
Correct.
Yeah, I think that's fine.
All right, we've got signatures on the envelope, moving on to the ballot. Signatures on the ballot.
All right.
So this one will count for Jonathan Alberton. Paper clip's weird. There we go. All right, then last, uh, provisional ballot we have here is for, um, Enoch Hevner. Nelson, this is one of the ones we actually put aside from the absentees, so um, we've seen this one before. Um, we've got so at the time of the provisional ballot, they were unable to provide their proof of identification. I have a copy of his driver's license on here. Um. Drop and drive. Everything matches up as far as address in Westville. Um, so I'm going to open up these secrecy envelope. No signatures on the white envelope. We do have signatures on the actual ballot. Thank you. Wait, where'd you, oh, it jumped on me. You could sign that envelope, please? So everything's good on that one. Uh, everyone in agreement to count this one?
Yes.
Yes, I agree.
All right, so that's everything for the provisionals. Let's make sure, I'm gonna run through the ones we weren't counting real quick, just to make sure there was no that Taylor didn't sign any of these. Okay, the only one Taylor didn't sign that she received identification for was one that was not a registered voter, so we're still in agreement not to count that one.
Correct.
I just got a text message from Francine in voter registration.
Uh-huh.
Um, she is stating that Stephen Bennett, who's in here, um, his apparently was, was an error.
What do you mean?
So voter registration has done a certificate of error on this because he was in fact in the system, but had been matched with somebody else within the county. So he is a registered voter, but there was an error in voter registration, so he was not found when they looked up his name.
So what do you mean by matched with somebody else? Did somebody, that somebody else who was matched with already vote?
Well, yes, but that person was a voter too.
But, but when you say matched?
So, so in, in the state voter registration system, they, the state will send into a hopper if, if there's matching pieces of information. Um, the only two things that were the same, and I did, I, I do remember this now, I did look at it myself, um, was the first name and the date of birth.
So there's two Stevens with the same date of birth?
Yes, well, I'm sure there's multiple Stevens with the same date of birth, but somebody in that office had actually clicked, yes, this is him. So then this poor guy goes under Steven with, with the same date of, date of birth, but a totally different last name. So I would be comfortable to count this man's vote. He did nothing wrong. It was, it was, it was an error on the part of a, of a county employee.
What did, what did you, what did you say that voter registration filled out? Like some certificate of error or something that you said?
Yes.
What, what is that called?
A certificate of error.
Oh, I got it right.
You did. The, the error was, was on their part. It was of no fault of the voter.
And that's, that, that's been filed?
Yes. Yeah, that goes right back into the state voter registration system. They do it within the system.
Okay, and you said Francine from voter registration confirmed that?
She just texted me to remind me of that.
Okay. I mean, if voter registration filled out the certificate of error and that's all we need to do regarding that, I'd say count it as well.
Well, what about the ID? Did he provide an ID the day of?
Ye- yes, he appeared in person to vote with his ID, and because he wasn't found in the system, they had him vote provisionally.
Right.
We have since located him within the system.
And he previously provided his ID?
Yes.
Right.
So again, I, I'm perfectly comfortable with that.
I am as well.
The only issue is if there's no identification as far as the, um, I mean, the box isn't checked, that the voter is unable or declined to present proof.
Correct. The, the voter showed identification at that time.
And then submitted the ballot, okay, yeah, I'm fine with counting it as well. Signed white envelope. See? And then we have a signed ballot as well.
Excellent.
There you go.
All right.
Okay, so I suppose we should, uh, all the decisions that were just made there, we should put to a vote that they're accurately reflect what we did. Um, so I would move to, uh, count the ballots that we, we said we were in agreement to count and not count the ones that had issues as far as deadlines or, um, missed affidavits to not count. Do I have a second for that?
Second.
I'd say, oh.
Okay, we got a motion and a second. Um, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Um, so those will all be done. We can get those to Dan now.
Yep.
Yep.
Those can count.
Okay, now as far as the, do we have to wait for him to come back to certify? Dan, do we need to wait for you to certify everything? Do we need to wait for you to certify everything? No, okay.
I don't think so. I don't think we have a race where any of that would make a difference.
Right.
Yeah.
Gotcha, okay. All right, so we'll move on to the next part, which is reading off the winning candidates, uh, so they get to hear my voice for a little bit. Um, we'll start with United States Senator, uh, Todd Young won with fifty-four percent of the vote. Secretary of State, Diego Morales. Uh, I'm not gonna read the percentages. Diego Morales won. Uh, Auditor of the State, Tara Clutz, Treasurer of State, Daniel Elliott. U.S. Representative of District One, Jennifer Ruth Green. Uh, U.S. Representative for District Two for the two-year term was Rudolph Yakim III. U.S. Representative District Two for partial term was also Rudolph Yakim III. Uh, State Senator, District Four, Rodney Pol Junior, State Representative District Seven, Jake Keska. State Rep. District Nine, Patricia Boy. State Representative District Twenty, Jim Pressel, Prosecuting Attorney of the Thirty-Second Circuit, Sean Fagan. Uh, County Sheriff, Ron Heig, County Assessor, Mike Schultz, County Commissioner, District One, Connie Grammerosa. County Council, District One, Justin Keel, County Council, District Two, Randy Novak. County Council, District Three, Mark Yagelski, County Council, District Four, Mike Rosenbaum. Cass County, or I'm sorry, Cass Township Trustee, Derek Goose. Cass Township Board, Rodney Peters, Tricia Rosenbaum, Jacqueline Thristarpe. Uh, Center Township Trustee, Lisa Pierzakowski, Center Township Board, Amy Burris, Dwayne Miller, Bob Wolinski. Clinton Township Trustee, Courtney Myers, Clinton Township Board, Scott Clemms, Gerard Land, Michael Nix. Cool Spring Township Trustee, Lois Osinski. Cool Spring Township Board, Gail Canes, Ken Havlin, Clifford Wozniak. Dewey Township Trustee, um, Dick Buker, Dewey Township Board, uh, Paul Malecki, Dale Meese, Larry Rust. Galena Township Trustee, Edward Heineck, Galena Township Board, Kim Sowers, Richard Grammerosa, and Claudia Winter. Hannah Township Trustee, Tony Wallace, Hannah Township Board, Mike Magley, Tammy Rosemont, Adam Sweet. Hudson Township Trustee, Brian Gray, Hudson Township Board, Austin Kosinski, Roger Teska, David Paul Wilson. Um, no candidate for Johnson Township Trustee. Johnson Township Board, Stephen Dob and Sandra Thomas. Kankakee Township Trustee, Steve Listinsky Junior, Kankakee Township Board, Donald Stoner, Kevin Wheatbrook, Tom Wheatbrook. Lincoln Township Trustee, Nancy Morgan. Lincoln Township Board, Leo Spence, Brent Friend, Steve Hollowfield. Michigan Township Assessor, Brent Bannock, Michigan Township Trustee, Rodney Washington. Michigan Township Board, Melody Farmer, George Kasmerzak, Susan Webster. New Durham Township Trustee, Kelly Tanger, New Durham Township Board, Brian Burns, Tom Fath, and Jim Ingram. Noble Township Trustee, Dave Dopping. Noble Township Board, Brad Harden, James Lindborg, and Glenn Schlunt. Pleasant Township Trustee, Joy Ziegler, Pleasant Township Board, Susan McLean. Um, Brett Parks and Robert Ulrich II. Prairie Township Trustee, Robert Younggreen, Prairie Township Board, Shonda Nelson, Sidney Stevens, and Sherri Younggreen. Cypio Township Trustee, Kalen Ludlow Deckard. Cypio Township Board, Walter Conlon Junior, Carl R. Harvey, Paul D. Lindeman, Springfield Township Trustee, Howard Conley. Springfield Township Board, Richard Lidkey, Eileen Moon Zona, Philip Sherlock. Union Township Trustee, Kristen Watkins, Union Township Board, Coralawn, Cassie Lipscomb, and Rudy Netzer. Washington Township Trustee, Charles Waterson III. Washington Township Board, Aaron Bannock, Scott Eftausky, and Harold Barr. Will's Township Trustee, Bobby Mase. Will's Township Board, Barry Halter, John Houseneck, Jordan Smith. Potawatomi Park Town Council at Large, Linda Pompey, and Regina Rudell. John Glenn School Board, Liberty Township, Christine Carson. John Glenn School Board, Lincoln Township, Monica Culp. John Glenn School Board, Polk Township, Tom Magahi. La Porte Community School Board at Large, Jennifer Farley, Justin Holmquist, Amy Jackson, and Ryan Seberg. Metropolitan School District, New Durham at Large. Um, the vote for three, there were two, Wayne Hodge, Mark Parkman. Michigan City Area School Board, Civil City. Thomas Domkowski, Michael Gresham, and Genali Hayes Peterson. New Prairie United School Corporation at Large, Jason De Meyer, De Mayor. New Prairie United School Corp, District Two, Richard Gadas. Uh, South Central School Board at Large, Deborah Allen, South Central School Board, Clinton Township, Brian Lautenbach. Tri-Township Consolidated School District One, Tim Goose. Tri-Township Consolidated School District Two, Nicholas Port. Tri-Township Consolidated School District Three, Melanie Mills. Court of Appeals, District Three, Mathias, yes. Um, Court of Appeals, District Five, Vedic, yes, and those last two were for retention purposes. Uh, that is the end of the winning ca- candidates. Um, anyone notice anything in there that struck them as odd?
I did not.
Okay, Heather?
No, I do think it's important to just clarify that these are for La Porte County. I know that there were a couple that were, you know, maybe congressional or something where they may have won La Porte County, but not necessarily won that seat.
Yeah, that's probably seven or eight of those, yeah. Okay, so do I have a motion to, as far as everything we've done today with provisional ballots and the reading of the winners, do I have a motion to certify the twenty-twenty-two general election? You're on mute, brother.
I'm sorry.
Yeah.
I move to, uh, accept the twenty-two general election and certify it.
Second?
Second.
Okay, motion and a second. Um, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, uh, no nays, uh, motion carries, so the twenty-twenty-two general election has been certified. That'll be sent downstate so that La Porte's official after today. Um, any board member comments? Nelson, if you wanna start it off?
Yeah, I, I do. Um, as you guys know, I, this is my last, uh, election board meeting. Um, I've, I've, I've talked to you guys about that, and uh, you know, with Dr. Cora stepping down from his position, I think it's, it's, um, the right move to go ahead and elect the new, uh, head of the Democratic Party, elect who he wants on the election board. And you know, I also think it's just time to allow someone And you know, I also think it's just time to allow someone else to step in and bring in new ideas. You know, I, I think it's, it's important to, uh, allow other people to step in and, and be a part of this process. I've had, I've, I've enjoyed my time working with you guys, we've done a great job, I think, you know, I'm, I'm proud of some of the accomplishments that we have with the mobile voting unit, the addition of early voting locations, I think that was a huge success. Um, and, and this last election, it just shows how well we work together and, and, uh, everything went smoothly, I'm, I'm really proud of that, so. Uh, thanks for working with me, guys, and, uh, I'll continue to help it any way I can, but you know, this is my last election, and I, as I told you guys, as soon as this is, uh, certified, I'd be stepping down, so thank you so much and look forward to the rest of it.
Thank you, Nelson, and we will surely miss you. Um, Heather, did you have any comments? Then I'll, I'll address that some more.
Um, no, just thank you to Nelson for all of his hard work. I, I know that there's been a lot of talk about vote centers and, so I, I did not want to see Nelson go yet, so I think we've, we've been a, a really good, good trio here, we've gotten a lot done, we've implemented a lot of new things, there's been a lot of change and it's gone fairly smoothly, so I'm pretty proud of that.
For sure.
So.
Um, I just wanted to thank everybody that volunteered, um, to work the election with us, um, as far as volunteers and paid workers. Um, you know, from, I believe, four in the morning on Election Days when we all started our, our day. Um, making sure everything went smoothly and, you know, with, aside from the barrage of phone calls, which we expect, everything went smoothly there. If there were any issues, I mean, we had people at the ready to take care of those issues, whether it was delivering paper, um, or I voted stickers, um, things like that to the, to the polls, that, that was great, you know, we had a great team as far as behind the scenes, you know, kept us fed and uh, moving, because you, you hit a wall kind of after, afternoon, right before the, uh, we're counting absentee votes and everything, the absentee team that came in, I can't thank them enough, it was, it went from Nelson and I, and I think a team or two at the primary to, I mean, just a table full of people that knew what they were doing, and if they, they didn't, they certainly picked it up real quick. Um, we got through a lot of absentee votes, I think there were over, over two thousand, I believe, that had to be sorted and counted, that's not including the early voting. Um, so that team worked very well together, and then just throughout the night with micro vote and everything, we were getting everything in, releasing results when we could. Um, we had a great little setup in the courthouse as far as dropping off machines and counting the ballots, we were live streaming. Um, and, you know, I, sorry for if you saw anything on the live stream that, that, uh, that made you question us, but, uh, it was the end of the night. Um, and then as far as that goes, we got the results out, here we are certifying it, and, uh, lastly, um, I want to thank Nelson for his service, uh, on this election board. He came in before I did, uh, welcomed me with open arms, then Heather came on, we had great discourse on this board as far as getting things done, and I think we're set up to where whoever replaces Nelson will be able to get us to vote centers as well, once we get everyone up to speed, because that's where we need to go um, to get some of these precincts out of schools and into places they should be, make it easier for everyone to go vote on Election Day. Um, and again, apologies to the people who normally voted at the, uh, what was that, beautiful Savior Church? Um, we, I posted as many signs on there as I could to direct them to the new location, but um, I know how signs are, I, I don't read them sometimes, uh, especially when I'm a creature of habit and I voted there for so many years, but uh, that'll be changed for the next election, obviously, because that location won't be used anymore, but again, just want to say thanks to Nelson, and thank you for appearing at this meeting from the beautiful Dominican, take your time out of the day with your kids and wife. Um, and that's it for me, and we will have a, a meeting shortly, be- before the first of the year. Um, and we'll discuss some more things there, so do I have a motion to adjourn at this time?
I move to adjourn?
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor, say aye? Aye. Eyes have it. Go enjoy the, the beautiful weather, Nelson.
All right, happy Thanksgiving, guys.
Happy Thanksgiving.
We are adjourned.